Okay.
Beware the man in black in the corner.
They're all progressive places, so.
They're not ready yet.
They're not, they're not moving this back. Also, they think it's really bright outside where.
Yeah. Good evening. I'd like to thank, welcome you to Albany City Council Work Session at 4:00 PM, May 9th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and call for roll call.
Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Olson. Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson. And Smith.
Here.
One councillor has been excused for this evening. She's doing a personal matter. Okay, business from the public? We have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Jeff DeRosa, please. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you taking the time to hear me. I was here four weeks ago. Do I need the mic? Am I good? All right. How's that? Hey, I'm live. Okay, so I was here four weeks ago and talked about some noise coming out of the YMCA. And there was going to be some action taken to have a compliance officer go out and do some recording. And that has yet to happen. Mayor, thank you for your input. You and I have been in dialogue about this. I wanted to place something for you folks. It's short. Bear with me to tell you what's going on in our, in our backyard, which is about 200 feet from this facility. Stay with me. It's, it's not fun. So that's a little blip of what, what's going on there. We can hear this inside our house when the sliding glass door is closed. And I think I've said all that to you folks already before. So Mayor Johnson put a meeting together with, city manager and the CEO of the YMCA and myself. And it was very clear that the noise is real. The issue is that the noise is being abated on the CEO of YMCA's timeline, not mine. So this has been going on 14 months. This is our day, every day at 8:00 AM in the morning when we open up the slider. Here it comes. So I know we're already addressing that. So the reason I'm here today is to talk about maybe a noise ordinance. The CEO of YMCA has told me that he wants to strategically locate childcare centers in neighborhoods throughout our town, which is a noble cause. Cheers and kudos for that. But we have to control the noise so that our neighbors, the people that we live with, don't get affected like this adversely. I think that a noise ordinance for a childcare, childcare center should be put in place, most definitely, so that we have peace in our yards. Again, this, what you heard is 200 feet away, not, not from here to there. It's, it's, it's a long ways. And today was, today was a great day. I had a conference call with my company, 23 of us nationwide on a Zoom. And the moderator of the Zoom call goes, DeRosa, have you got kids? Can you mute out? And he muted me out. And I was inside a building in my backyard. And he heard it. Again, 200 feet away. So this isn't just, you know, a minor nuisance. It's, it's pretty invasive. The compliance officer was due to come by. Alex, you came to my house, Mayor Johnson, excuse me, five weeks ago. Thank you for that. He was, he was due to come by and do some recordings and it hasn't happened yet. Now he left a message saying he wants to come this week, five weeks later. So again, that's five weeks times five. That's 25 days, folks, that we're hearing this noise. And it's, it's terrible. I'll tell you what, we're, we're losing sleep. My elderly neighbor is losing sleep. She fell because she's drowsy. In the middle of the day, she fell down and had to wait for her daughter from Harrisburg to come and get her. So this is adversely affecting us. So a noise ordinance, I think is very critical. How are we doing on time? Oh, man, I pegged up.
You're expired, but.
I'm there.
Counsel, is he okay if he continues for a few more? Okay. Counsel, you're okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. So a noise ordinance, I think we need one in our town to protect our, our, our folks that are living and enjoying their backyards. You know, spring's here and we're not out in our backyard because the noise is terrible. The next one is, we live on Fur Oaks Drive and the pavement is just falling apart. We had the snow and of course now all the, I don't know what you call the overlay, the top layer is just peeling up. It's in pretty bad shape. So I thought I'd bring that to the attention of the city council too. And I'm, I'm sure I'm the only street in Albany. It's in pretty bad shape. But then also, if we could get a speed controlled device, you know, the electronic one that says your speed is this, the people are ripping down the neighborhood. The beginning of this street is at 29th and it goes quite a ways deep back. So there's a lot of arterial traffic that passes down there. So if we could get some speed control, that'd be great.
So can I ask you, can you send that to the city clerk?
You bet.
So that would help the staff understand what, what your concerns are. But I would thank you for your, are we done? Are you almost done?
Yep, yep. How do I get that to the city clerk?
It is in the agenda. It has an address in there and I'll actually bring that to your attention once we get done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Oh, the overlay, the road. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So what's going on? The asphalt overlayment on our street? Yeah, it's got some cracks, of course. And once snow and water gets under it, then the orbits are off. So the street's in pretty bad shape. So that was it. Street repair.
E word asphalt.
Asphalt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before Mr. DeRosa spoke, I should have read the following, business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments and or register to speak to the email address posted on the, on the website before noon the day of the meeting, appear in person and be registered to speak and sign up for the signup sheet. So we've done that. Thank you. Next on the agenda would be SDC methodology evaluation. Rob Emmons and Deb Galardi, and I believe both are online with Director Bailey. So Rob Emmons, is he here?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. I see you.
Can, can you hear me okay?
You sound a little muffled.
Okay. I think I'm having a little bit of trouble with my microphone. I'll speak loud and slowly.
Yeah, you're, you're really muffled. Can you start?
I will keep this very.
Who does he have?
Very short.
Shut down your microphone and restart it.
Maybe call in on the phone?
Can you call in on the phone?
Rob, I'll, I'll, I'll take over if you just hang on. Hi, I'm Eric, counsel. I'm sorry I can't be there, but I have a little bit of a cold. So I'm, I'm at home today. Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes, again.
Great. So we're back today as the memo in your packet states to share with you the results of the data analysis that Deb Galardi and her group did regarding residential system development charges. If you remember, we had this discussion as part of a group of larger discussions about affordable housing. And the intent here is to try to scale the system, systems development charges to provide essentially a lower SDC charge for a much smaller house. And as Deb will show you, the data does support a methodology that would, could be approved to do that. So I'll turn it over to her, but just a note. If you agree with this proposal, there is a legal process that has to take place in changing our SDCs. And so we would need several months to get it published and, and through that whole process. So it would not be something that could, a change that could take place this week. But if you agree with our proposal, then we would be back in front of you at a public hearing to modify these SDC rates a few months down the road. And with that, I'll turn it over to Deb.
Thanks, Chris. Can everyone see the, just the title slide here on the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay. As Chris mentioned, so this is follow-on work from Phase 1 of our review. And as part of Phase 1, we looked at your existing SDC methodologies to identify alternative structures to address housing affordability. We evaluated scaled SDC structures in terms of what data would be needed to further evaluate and develop those options for the city, the potential impacts on SDCs paid by residential development and potential SDC revenue collections. At that time and, and part of this scope, we are not discussing policies related to SDCs exemptions. We are strictly looking at the structure of the charges and potentially how those are, how the existing SDCs are collected. The Phase 2, which we're presenting on tonight, is looking at the relationship between house size and the impacts of the system. These are impact fees, systems development charges are. And we, using local data, have established, as Chris said, that there is a relationship between impacts for water, wastewater and transportation. Our Phase 2 scope does not include parks, which is being done under a separate contract and as part of your overall SDC methodology update. So what we're doing tonight is presenting our findings. First, a little bit of background on the, just the context that, a reminder, SDCs are not user fees. They're charged before the system use, use occurs. So the methodology must rely on development characteristics that are known at the time the fees are assessed to estimate the future impact. And that impact, the, the measures, the variables that we look at differ by system. For water and sewer, we're looking at the volume of water consumed or discharged to the sewer system. And for transportation, we're looking at the trips generated by the development. This project is not looking to adjust fee levels overall. That's part of your master planning process. We are just looking at how those SDCs are collected from different types of development. While we're not looking at the parks, the people per household do drive impacts in terms of water use, sewer use and trips generated. And so just a reminder that, of information we shared before that there is, based on census, US Census data, the number of people per household does generally increase with the size of the house. So our hypothesis, which we tested, was that, that we would also see differences in water sewer use and trips generated. The objective is to have this be a revenue neutral impact on the revenue collected in that when you discount SDCs on the bottom end of the range of house sizes, you also increase SDCs on the upper end. And so it's both equitable, defensible and revenue neutral. As we look at our findings and the potential impacts, it's helpful to understand the distribution of existing homes across the different size categories. So this chart shows you that the average dwelling unit size for a single family house is about 2,250 square feet. And the majority of existing homes are in the 1250 to 3250 square foot range. Only about 6% are less than 1,250 square feet and about 7% are larger than 3,250. So with that, I will just walk through quickly the three systems and remind you of the current charges and what we have found in the update. So the water SDCs are currently assessed based on the meter size. Because most residential homes are served by a three-quarter inch meter, most homes are charged a uniform SDC. The scaled SDCs that we developed as part of this project are based on an evaluation of three years of water use data. And the city was able to produce water use records by month. So we were able to look at summer water use, which drives the sizing of the water system, and match that with actual house sizes. So we can clearly establish a relationship between house size and water use. And this charge, or this chart shows that relationship very clearly, that as you increase the house size in terms of square footage, you do see an increase in the average gallons per day consumed by the household. And that relationship is linear throughout the, the range of, of house sizes. So meaning that we can predict, based on the house size, for each additional square foot added, we can estimate with reasonable accuracy the water use of that unit. So each square foot added is 0.135 gallons per day. You can see the, from the solid line, that the average for all single family households is about 320 gallons per day in the average summer period. But the range of uses based on the, the house size range from about 100 to over 600. So you can see that charging based on house size can enhance the equity and the affordability of the SDCs. To demonstrate that further, we put together a chart here that just has some sample home sizes ranging from 750 to over about three, up to about 4,000 square feet. As I mentioned, 97% of single family residential are served by three-quarter inch meter. So we have assumed for all but the largest home, the 4,000 square foot home, that these are three-quarter inch meters. So the solid bars are all showing the current SDC at 3,394. When we go to a scaled SDC, then you see the hatched bars that have a significantly lower SDC for the smallest home sizes and kind of a break even point at about 2,350 square feet. And then you have the scaled SDCs being more than the current SDCs for the larger homes. With the exception that if a home is currently, is, is to be served by a one inch meter, then there would be very little difference under the scaled SDC approach and the current approach. So again, the, the scaled approach would, would have some pretty significant discounts on the lower end and some increases on the upper end relative to the current schedule. For wastewater, we went through similar process, same data set. But in this case, we're evaluating winter water use because that is the water that generally returns to the sewer and excludes outdoor water use. Here, there's still, there is a relationship between house size and use, but you'll see that it's, it's pretty flat for a number of the categories. Meaning that, you know, in this case, on the lower end, the smaller homes, we do see reduced use. And on the upper end, the larger homes, we see increased use. And then in the middle, it's pretty uniform in terms of what the gallons per day per, per single family unit. So that speaks to a different kind of structure than a regression slope equation as we presented for water. In this case, we're suggesting a tiered structure. And this chart shows four tiers, two on the lower end and one representing that, that block between 1,250 square feet and 3,000 square feet would be charged the same. And then you'd have the two lower tiers for the smallest units. And then anybody over 3,000 square feet would be charged in the fourth tier. For the fourth tier, it's helpful to remember that that above 3,500 square feet home, that represents about 7% of your existing homes. We do, from the, from the billing data, see a significant increase in the wastewater volumes, estimated wastewater volumes for those homes. We, because we're potentially considering a tiered structure for both transportation, which I'll get to in a minute, and wastewater, we wanted to be consistent in establishing the tiers. And the data for transportation was not sufficiently robust in terms of the sample size for the very largest homes. But their use of 3,000 square foot, feet as a fourth tier worked really well. So we're proposing that for both wastewater and transportation. So this table then shows you those four tiers and the square footage that would be included in that tier. So tier one would apply to 1,000 square feet and below, tier two, over 1,000 up to 1,250. And tier three is that larger block of homes between 1250 and 3,000. And tier four, greater than 3,000 square feet. And in this case, tier three would represent the average. And then you'd have two discounted tiers, tier one and two, which would, while the, the range of use is not as significant as water, meaning that the discounts are not as large and the surcharge is certainly not as, as high. We still see a, a pretty, you know, a moderate discount on the lower end, 27% for tier one and about 11% for tier two. And then about a 9% additional use and charge on the upper tier. And you can see what, how that would distribute based on the current 4,255 SDC for, for wastewater, how that would be impacted by these tiers with the lowest tier just over 3,000 and the upper tier just over 4,600. The third system, transportation, as I mentioned, the data set, here, we don't have city data to use, but we have Lynn County data that's part of the Oregon Household Activity Survey that can be used and has been used by other cities to develop transportation tiered structures for SDCs. And so again, same four tiered structure, the, the difference in the tiers and the EDU, equivalent dwelling unit factors, which would represent the, the discounts and surcharges. Here we have greater discount and greater surcharge on the upper end. And that's a result of the data showing us that the house size does have more significant impact in terms of the trips that are generated by the household compared to the water use. So a 4,400 current SDC would be represented under a tiered approach would range from 2786 at the lower end to 5878 in tier four. This table shows you all three systems and the equivalency factors relative to kind of that middle block of homes, tier three for sewer and transportation. So if you consider that your, kind of your mean falls in, in the middle of that tier, then you can see that tier one, that smallest size category would range, and these are the, so this is the equivalency factor. The discount is one minus the, the, the factor. So the sewer would have the smallest discount, if you will, for tier one, but it would still be 27%. And that increases as we move to the right, transportation and water, water household, less than 1,000 square feet or less, would pay less than 50% of the current SDC. On the upper end, of course, the reverse is true because we're looking to still recover generally the same amount of revenue. And the impacts of those larger homes are demonstrated in the data. So combining all three of those systems together and excluding the parks SDC, which is not part of this analysis, you can see the total SDC bill, which for the three systems, for most homes is just over $12,000. And under the scaled approaches, as described in the previous slides, the range would be $7,300 or a discount of, of 39% to, within the same meter size, potentially up to $15,000, which is about 25% higher than the current SDC. And the, and the, the largest homes, it would really depend on if it currently, you know, it will be served by a one inch meter or a three-quarter inch meter. If it's a one inch meter, then the current total increases under the existing rate structure. And so the increase, the percentage increase would actually be less. The, going forward with some change to the structure is a council policy decision. And really is about balancing your different objectives. Certainly, there's more administration associated with looking at individualized, in some cases, SDCs based on the house size. You already, as part of your parks SDC, consider the size of the home and how you charge. So getting a system in place to do that would, should not be that difficult. And need to make sure that the revenue is, that you're collecting is consistent with the needs of the systems. We have estimated and, and tried to ensure revenue neutrality, but it will depend on what types and sizes of homes are built in the future. So it will be good to track this. And certainly, all of the data here points to a strong relationship between the house size and the, excuse me, system impact. So they're equitable and defensible. Just to summarize, this, these scaled structures are being used by a number of communities to address housing affordability concerns. Local and regional data supports the scaled SDCs for all three of these systems, as it does for parks as well. And as I said. And as I said, revenue neutrality depends in part on the future housing characteristics. And the SDC structures and fee levels, which we're not proposing to change here, the fee levels are council policy decisions. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, Counsel Novak.
Could you speak to the administrative costs?
I, so we have not, as part of this process, estimated what those additional costs would be, if there would be some. Again, because it's already part of the permit process and how you assess SDCs for parks, the information gathering should already be in place. There would then be the need to then develop the fee schedules and have trained the staff on what the new structures, how they would use those tables in terms of determining the the SDCs for the systems.
Counsel, are you done, Counsel Novak?
I'm not sure how much that helped me, but thank you.
We can come back to you if it comes to you. Counselor Bartholomew, you have anything?
I was just wondering, I was calculating, like, if I was a developer and I wanted to build several, a development of smaller homes versus a development of larger homes, and if I was a developer, I'd be saving about $150,000 on, say, a 20-home development because I could put a few more smaller homes in the same place as a set of larger homes, and I would be saving that much in terms of my SDC costs, so that sounds really nice to me.
Counsel Olson?
Oh, yes. I may have missed it, but are are these new homes, these various sizes?
Counsel Olson, we can't hear you.
Is your mic on, sir?
How about no?
Yes.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Are these new homes we're talking about? Okay.
Yes, Counsel Olson, these would be new homes.
Okay. And are, is the data for local buildings here in Albany?
Yes. Yes, so the square footage is data from, that we already have from Albany houses, and the water usage came straight from our utility billing system.
Okay, thank you.
That it, sir? Is that it? Okay. Counsel Kapczynski?
Yes, yes, I really like the idea of the scaled process, simply because it makes it much, much more equitable. And my question is probably much for more for policy decision-making down the road, but I'm trying to figure out if one of the goals is affordability, is there any way to, and I'm wondering if even hypothetically, because the demand seems, we have so few 1,000, 1,200-foot, single-bedroom homes, or even two bedrooms in the in that size range, if even if those, that lowest tier paid $0 in SDCs across the board, would that incentivize any developer whatsoever to build those smaller homes?
Well, we'll have conversations with them. I'm sure it will, some, because some people are more suited, this is my, what I've learned, more, people are more suited to build what's in their wheelhouse, and some of them want to build smaller homes. So let's, let's find out, right?
Thank you.
There you go. Counsel, Counsel Smith?
I can't really add to that. I I do like the idea of a scaled approach as presented here. I believe it does sound more equitable to me.
Did you want to finish your thought, Counsel Novak? Thank you, Counsel Smith.
I don't have, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, I thought you still had more.
No, I said that, I I asked if they could address the administrative costs, and she said something, and it didn't really help a whole lot, but that's not the focus right now, so that's all right.
Counsel Novak, I can try. So when we talk about the administrative costs, what we're talking about is the the time and cost to gather the data from the applicant, and then for staff to calculate the SDCs and implement those. We're already gathering the square footage data on residential applications, so what Deb was saying is that we don't have to create a new process necessarily to gather the square footage data, because we're already gathering it, because that's how parks is calculating their SDCs. So that process is already built. The change will be, right now, when you come in upstairs, there's a small staff of people that says, oh, you're building a single-family residential house, your SDCs, I know off the top of my head, because they're set, they're this, that, and the other, for Public Works, and that process will have to change. So we'll have to generate the new tables, which isn't going to take much time, and then we just have to retrain the staff to not quote numbers off the top of their head, but to go look at the tables and give them their precise SDC. So there's a little more time, you know, per structure, but it's definitely not what I would call a burdensome administrative cost to to implement this change, it just will be a little bit of time to train people and generate the the documents that we need to to get these things calculated correctly in the system.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did have a couple things, actually just one thing. The bracket for tier three is 1,250 or 1,250 to 3,000 square foot for for all of these? My question is, is can we make that upper end lower? So it is more expensive to build a 3,000-square-foot home, because we're, they typically have more cars, more bedrooms, more bathrooms at a bigger home, why didn't we put it at, say, 2,000 or 2,500? Has any tables been generated with that number?
So it really has to do with the impact here, and so you can see from this chart, I think, most clearly, that absolutely, when we look at water use, let me go back to the water use one table, that it it starts, it climbs continuously, there's a little dip down here out at 3,500 square feet, but generally, this is a continuous increase at all levels of house sizes. That's not the case when we look at at winter water use, which is how we estimate wastewater flows. So when you consider the 2,500 square feet, it's about the same as 3,000 or 3,250. So that's why we broke, and with transportation, the increase is right, you know, in this category, 2750 to 3,000 as well. So that's why we didn't bring that tier four to a lower house size. Does that help? It's based on the data and the impacts.
Okay, thank you. I'll have questions, but we'll go ahead and proceed. So Counsel, any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. We're not making any decisions today, right? That's what we're here for today, was education. Excellent.
No, we are. Generally, if the council supports this concept, which it sounds like it, the council does, then what we will have to do is work with Deb and go out and and work our way through the process to change the SDCs. So they'll be published, and then there'll be a public hearing at a future council meeting for your final consideration on this.
So thumbs up, so she can get to work. Does that work for you, Counsel? Give me a thumb. There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next on the agenda is business from the Council. I'll start, I started last time over there, I'll start over here with Counsel Novak.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Kapczynski?
Yes, we had way too much fun at the Carousel on Saturday night for our first annual Kentucky Derby event. People were dressed in massive amounts of finery, some of them looked a little out of place, having been in that kind of dress, dressy affair for quite a while, but a good time was had by Hall. We even actually had a, an actual gentleman there in a white jacket with a trumpet that started the races, all five of them, and it was just way too much fun, so you should have, you should have been there.
Thank you, Ray. Counsel Kapczynski. Counsel Smith?
This one isn't as much fun. I have one item. I was contacted by a resident of the Lexington area who is interested in, wants to ask the Council to consider a fireworks ban for this season, this summer season, based on fire danger and just as much the noise, the effect on neighbors, on veterans, on pets, and potential for property damage. So I'm bringing that to your attention for consideration.
Thank you very much. Counsel Olson?
Oh, yes. I've had comments about the Vine Street Canal, and the people along the canal are glad to have the surveyors out there. Am I talking loud enough? Can you hear me out there? Okay. And it's interesting to see where the property lines are, and in some cases, they've been able to refine where the side yard properties are, and neighbors are interested to find that fences are not in quite the right place, but no friction has resulted from that. But in a couple of places, the idea of putting down a gravel pavement really doesn't work for some of the people along the canal. And I, is, are there people listening that are working on that situation? And I'm talking particularly about the blocks between 10th and 12th. And if you get in those backyards and look at the property that the city owns between the residential property and the canal itself, the part that the city owns looks like it has never had any traffic along there, in fact, it looks to be more, pretty much of a berm, because the the level of the backyards along there is just about the same as the level of the water in the canal. And if you were going to build a fence along the residential property line in the city's right-of-way, you would either have to build the backyard up three or four feet, or build a 10- or 12-foot fence, if you were going to have a six- or eight-foot fence. So I I told them that I didn't think the city was planning to do anything major with the canal right-of-way along there in the immediate future, and I didn't think the city would strong-arm them into doing something of that sort. Then the, another situation is that there are trees in that right-of-way, and that is on the west side of the property owner's property, and they enjoy and appreciate the shade that those trees provide, and they were wondering if the city was going to come in and cut down their trees. And again, I said, well, I, I don't think the city is going to strong-arm and push this real hard. I think as long as there's not a major project that's going to take up the, that property, I don't think your trees are are in danger. Now, you know, that I said, I think, and I hope, so I would hope that the city, whoever's involved with this, would consider it and maybe bring me back some, well, maybe you can answer it now, but if not, bring it back for Wednesday or a later meeting as to just exactly what the plan is, because these property owners are thinking that this might happen real soon, and they might be told by the city they were going to have to cut down a, oh, foot-and-a-half-diameter tree, which, you know, you start cutting trees of that size, it gets to be not only a loss of shade, but an expensive proposition. So, and then they, another property, there's a shed across the city's right-of-way, but he said he could drag that shed out of the way, and that looked like a fairly major problem, looked like a fairly major shed to me, but he thought he could do it if he had to, and so there's that problem. And then another problem is that if that right-of-way is opened up, and this is not in the blocks between 10th and 12th, this is another area, and I'm not going to specify where this is, but there's a certain amount of friction over side yard fences between a couple of neighbors, and if the city's right-of-way goes through, they'll have to build new back fences, and that could cause problems, so. Maybe I can get some reassurance that I'm on the right track, and and whether we need to have more discussion on the Council as to how we're going to treat the city's right-of-way. Now, all these people, I did assure them that that was city right-of-way, and the city did not want to give away any of that right-of-way, because sometime in the future, there might be a project, like replacing a large water line, that one property owner said he understood was in the city's right-of-way there, and I wouldn't be a bit surprised if that was was the case, so. Any response at this point, or shall I wait till next meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It looks like Director Bailey might be able to.
I know, I'm watching her face, too. Director Bailey, do you have something for Counsel Olson?
Sure. Thank you, Counsel Olson. And just to start off with, all of these concerns that you're bringing up are reasons why this issue has never been addressed in, for decades. You know, staff has known for a long, long time that there were these incursions into that right-of-way, but it wasn't really being developed as a road or a transportation system, there wasn't really a pressing need. And so people, some people, not, certainly not the majority even, but some people just gradually sort of creeped over into what looked like part of their yard. And so I, I want to say that we definitely understand some of the people that have come to the Council and been frustrated, that this is probably what they bought when they bought it, and, you know, it's, it's not straightforward for them. A couple of the points, our interpretation of the Council's guidance, well, I'll say my interpretation of the Council's guidance on this issue is, is this. It was clear that you wanted us to get the personal property out of the right-of-way, that no one should be allowed to use public property for their private storage. So that's our first goal. So we're trying to get the shed, the cars, the campers, the whatever, out of the right-of-way. Secondly, the fences and things that are across the right-of-way at the roads that would prevent us from being able to even walk down the right-of-way, we're getting removed. We need to have access to the right-of-way. The section you mentioned that is embanked, somewhat embanked, between 10th and 12th, is a very interesting problem, because part of our responsibility is to make sure that that embankment for the canal is structurally sound, and that there's no seepage and loss of water. We have embankments further down near Queen Avenue that we monitor regularly for seepage. So the fact that there's a fence across that right-of-way that prevents us from getting, walking in there even, and observing that bank is actually a problem. So we need to have that fence removed so that we can get in and do inspections. So, we need to have that fence removed, so that we can get in and do inspections, make sure that the bank is safe. As for the trees, it's not our intention to cut down trees, trees are very good at holding the sediment together, and they provide shade and all of the things that you mentioned, but what we did was sent the property owners a letter that said, there, these are the obstructions in the right-of-way, at some point in the future, the city may need to come in and have you remove those obstructions. Now, if we were going to put a road through there, then the city would remove the tree at the city's cost. It's not our intention to tell property owners to get out there and cut down trees. What we're just trying to do is take what the guidance that the council gave us and interpret it as closely to what you said, and rationally and reasonably as we can, and so, that's sort of what we've been doing. Fences that obstruct the right-of-way have to come down. Personal property that's in the right-of-way has to be removed. Where it makes sense, we might gravel a road through there. So, for instance, my brain's really foggy, but the fresh corn property that came and talked with you, and the property to the south of them, we might rock that area. We'll look at it once they get their things out and decide. Any property owner is welcome to put a fence along their property line at the edge of the right-of-way, and that's why we're surveying it, so that everyone knows, you know, where we all stand. But we're certainly, I think Counsel Olson on the same page, that we're not trying to come through and, and get people out of there and put down a paved road, it's definitely, that would be far too expensive. It's not our intention to be that disruptive. By the same token, we need to be able to have access through there, and that's what we're, sort of the balance we're trying to strike right now.
I can see where you, particularly the block between 11th and 12th. I think there's, there's room between the water and the canal and the existing city fence, which is not on the property line. I think there's plenty of room that you can get in there, look at the canal bank, and look at the fence and that stuff. So, I am thinking that that does not have to change immediately, I would think that is probably satisfactory for the time being, however long that might be.
I'm not sure the exact property you're speaking about, but if there's a fence across the right-of-way at 12th, then we need that, that section of that fence to come down. Because the problem with the seepage, where we see it, is not on the inside of the berm, it's on the outside of the berm, at the toe of the berm, is usually where problems pop up. So, but we can, we'll definitely work with the property owner, I think Stacy and Gordon have been in touch with them already, and, you know, trying to find a solution, it's, I mean, these are really, very real problems, and, you know, it's this challenge that we have of trying to take the council's direction and intent and apply it to all these different situations, and so, we're working with each property owner individually to try to get there.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Counsel Olson.
I'll be in touch with the property owner also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Olson. Counsel Bartholomew? Nothing? I just had a few things this evening. Staff's going to look at a noise report, Council, City Manager?
I was going to say, when you turned it over to me, that we, we have been Christian Dell, Officer Dell has been taking readings in the neighborhood. The last set of readings he needs to take is within the DeRosa House, but he's been taking readings all around there. Now, as you know, we have one code compliance officer, so, he's busy with a lot of things. With respect to the noise ordinance, one of the things that I've asked Chris to do is look at noise ordinances in cities around us, cities in Oregon, you know, as we, as we grow and grow, and as we become more dense, that noise interferences or the effects of noise could become more of a problem. So, just in terms of looking ahead, it might be a good idea for us to look at a noise ordinance. We don't currently have a decibel level in our code, so, this is something that...
Is this new territory for us?
What's, pardon me?
Is this new territory for us?
Yes, in a manner of speaking, if we want to tighten up on that code, there have been other noise complaints in the city, so it may be time to look at that.
All right, thank you. The next thing I want to bring up is, I gave blood today for the first time in probably 15 years. If you haven't donated in a while, Red Cross needs blood, that's my personal preference, but it was quite an interesting experience. The young lady that started my blood test, or my blood draw, one of the people there knew who I was and said, "Don't mess up, that's the mayor of Albany." She got so scared, she stuck me twice. It was a good experience, but if you haven't donated in a while, please do. And I actually ran into the city manager's wife and a few people that I know in the community. And then, the power outage, I received probably 40 text messages this morning regarding the power outage, and I know Matt Harrington put something out on the internet, on Facebook about it, unfortunate accident, but there's an article in the paper, and Janet Steele invited me to a tour of Target, looking at the grounds out there, so greatly appreciate that. Last, was it last Friday, I think it was? And other than that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for his report, and we'll go from there.
Well, I've already given mine. Nothing further to add, Mayor.
Nothing further. Oh, I'm sorry, Wine Walk was awesome, my first one ever, and it was, met a bunch of beautiful people from all over Old Valley, Portland, people from Redmond, people from, so, our Wine Walk went really well, I think, even though it was raining, people showed up, so, thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is recess to executive session to discuss labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.660, dash subsection two, subsection D, Director Holly Rotten, Union Resources Director. The council will now meet in executive session, I just read that. Representatives of the public, of the news media, and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room and to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, the staff will open the doors, and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the session and previously, as previously announced. No decisions, no decisions were made at the executive sessions. I have now recessed the meeting, the executive session at time 4:56 PM. Or work session at 6:14 PM.
Let me go back to my agenda. What's the agenda? I closed my agenda.
Just adjourning, Your Honor.
Again?
Just adjourning. That's all.
Well, that's perfect, then. With that, it's our adjourned meeting at 6:14 PM. Thank you.